Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Steve Lawrence and I'm the mayor of Jasper. Thank you all for attending. I'd like to call this meeting of the Planning and Zoning Commission to order. Our first order of business, I'm going to ask Lonnie Waters, if you would, to say the devotion for us, please.
Lord, we thank you for the opportunity to gather together. Lord, we know this is a new experience for some of the board members. We asked you to watch over them, watch over the mayor as he swears them into their position. And, Lord, we just ask you for their guidance and knowledge and to help the city of Jasper in making all the right decisions and advising the council of how their findings are. Lord, we just ask you for all these favors and blessings in your name. Amen.
And John Snaby, all rise, please, and let's say our prayers be with us to our flag.
My prayers be with the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. And at this time, if I could have you come forward and join in attendance, please. And Rodney Buckingham, Tom Flinver, David Keller, and John Snaby. If you will, just stand right here, and I'm going to come down from here to you. So there are two oaths of offices that are now required for every board member in municipal government. I'm going to read the first one of these to you, and as I do this, I want you to say "aye," and I want you to state your name in full, and then I'll read the rest of it, okay? Okay, if you will, please, say "aye."
Aye.
State your name in full.
David Keller.
Do swear or affirm that I will well and truly perform the duties of a member of the Planning and Zoning Commission to the best of my abilities and will take only my lawful compensation. I do further swear or affirm that I am not the holder of any unaccounted far public money due to this state or any other political subdivision or authority thereof, that I am not the holder of any office of trust under the government of the United States, any other state or any foreign state which I am prohibited from holding by the laws of the state of Georgia, and that I am otherwise qualified to hold said office according to the Constitution and laws of the state of Georgia, and that I will support the Constitution of the United States and this state, so help me God. Please say "I do."
I do.
Thank you. Now, the state of Georgia requires a loyalty oath from all persons who are members of a board in all municipalities anymore. This loyalty oath, I will read to you the same way. I'm going to ask you, I will say "aye," and you state your name in full. Aye.
David Keller.
A citizen of the city of Jasper, Pickens County, Georgia, and being an appointed official of the city of Jasper, Georgia, and the recipient of public funds for services rendered such employee, do hereby solemnly swear and affirm that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the great state of Georgia. Say, please, "I do."
I do.
You are now lawfully sworn in, and now I need to have from you a recommendation for someone to serve as chair for this committee.
I'd like to recommend that Rodney Buckingham serve as our chair.
We have a recommendation for Rodney Buckingham. Do I have a second for that?
I'll second it.
A recommendation and a second. Can all in favor please vote for that?
Aye.
Okay. I need also a recommendation for vice chair. Do I have one of those?
I'd like to recommend John Snaby for vice chair.
We have a recommendation for John Snaby to serve as vice chair. Do I hear a second?
Second.
And in discussion, all in favor, please say "aye."
Aye.
And now, Mr. Buckingham, if you will, please, take your seat up here, and ladies and gentlemen, if you will, please, you have packages behind the counter over here, and come and take one of these available chairs. Come right through here. So, Mr. Chair, your first order of business is in front of you. You've got an agenda, you need to adopt that agenda. You will, please, sir. You're going to need a motion to adopt the agenda as presented. I think all of this should be held out by U.S. members. And at this point in time, my usefulness in this particular room is done other than as a witness, so I will turn this over to Brandon at this point. Brandon?
Thank you, Mayor. Congratulations, all. Thanks for everyone coming out, and as the mayor said, first order is just to adopt the agenda, and if you do not get your agenda and packet via email, get with staff afterwards. We'll make sure that we either get it to the correct email address or mail a hard copy. But beyond that...
Are there any additions or additions to the agenda?
There are none.
Do you hear a motion to adopt the amendment, or to adopt the agenda?
I move to adopt the agenda.
I was thinking. All in favor?
Aye.
And opposed? Thank you.
And, Mr. Chairman, I would like to point out, and by the way, for everyone, this is the city attorney, and by virtue of him being the city attorney, he's with us tonight for any legal questions that there may be. But before you're in your packets, you have the minutes from the October 15 public hearing. Now, I recognize that you all were not in attendance at that meeting. However, as a synopsis, the only matter on that particular agenda pertained to staff's recommendation of integrating a special land use permit into the zoning ordinance, it was something that had been discussed at the council level in the fall, and it went through the public hearing process to go to the planning and zoning recommendation, which they affirmed, and then implemented by the mayor and council. So, I don't know, Mr. Snaby, procedurally, if it is okay for them to vote on the minutes as presented?
Well, since you're the only board that we have, we do need you to approve those minutes. And I think based upon the verification of the city manager that they're truly accurate, you can have a motion just to approve those October 15 minutes.
Do we have a motion to adopt the minutes of October 15, 2019, public hearing?
Approve those.
Approve those. House will move. Do we have a motion? Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Thank you very much.
Next item is old business. Is there any old business?
There is none, Mr. Chairman, so no turnover from there.
All right. New business? The first item under new business is a public hearing, request to rezone parcel number JA 11023 at 26 Hickory Street from R1 to R3. Mr. Douglas?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chair, commission members, and public. We do have the applicant in attendance tonight, and as the packet will illustrate, staff did give a staffing analysis of referencing all the requisite items in the zoning ordinance in which we're supposed to look at. But as a synopsis, the best way to put this is this is .6 acres behind the chamber along Hickory Street, so if you know where the chamber is at Veterans Memorial, Old Stiegall. It's the parcel kind of at that intersection. It's the, it used to be a former brick ranch home. It had some damage due to a fire. Subsequent to that, the applicant who owns the parcel had requested to rezone it from its current zoning of R1, which is low-density residential, requires the requisite 26,000 square feet. He's wanting to go to an R3 multifamily zoning, and what that entails is that will allow up to six attached dwelling units. And I will answer any questions, Mr. Chair and commission members, but I did want to see if you want to hear from the applicant or his representative, and I think he's got some visual aids to present as well.
The applicant is here. Would you care to add anything to this?
Sure. I can also show you what I envision of where the property is located.
Yeah, why don't you hold it? We'll just let him hold it. Mr. Chairman, Mr. Vice Chairman, ladies and gentlemen of the commission, my name is Wayne Reese, and I have been a part of this community for a number of years. I don't actually live here, but this is a piece of property that I've owned for 15 years, and...
You determine where...
Yes, this is where the Veterans Park is, right here. And then this is 26 Hickory Street, right there. And then I actually own this parcel here with all of these houses. The community did a great job with Memorial Park. We've been upgrading these properties for the last 15 years, and since this went through a major improvement here with the park, if you've been down the street, you'll see that we have renovated these houses and repainted the exterior to bring up the curb appeal and the appeal in general of the property. This house did suffer from a fire back in August, and I've been talking with the staff since early September of what we could do with the property that would really benefit the community and, quite frankly, the owner too. And we have gone through some different possibilities. What my preference would have been, had been to build single-family detached houses, but to continue to own everything together as part of one parcel. I spent a lot of years in planning and zoning and architecture and renovating houses, so sort of my concept and my dream is to have traditional neighborhood development where you have houses that developed back in the '30s and '40s with small yards and more manageable. But when we looked more in depth at the zoning code, we saw that we needed to go for a multifamily designation, and with that multifamily designation, wanted to have something that would have a real presence for the community. So, this is where we are conceptually right now. This is sort of a Prama-Greek type building. It would be three stories for a total of six units. Each of the units would be two bedrooms and two baths, and the ceilings on the inside would be 10-foot ceilings. So, we're targeting sort of a, an upscale market with this property, if you will. And this would be sited basically perpendicular to Stiegall Drive as you come up on that property, and would be overlooking Harrah. So, you think about the size of this building, and this is basically the footprint right here. So, you see how much is left over on this piece of property. And here, we have drawn in the 12 parking spaces that would be required under the ordinance, two per unit. We've got room over here for a picnic area, a grilling area. But what our desire to do is to build something that will have a very positive presence in the community, and will sort of blend in with everything, you know, in terms of how real communities develop over time. They develop organically, and everything doesn't look exactly like everything else, but you can sort of look at things and see it progressing over time. Like the houses that we have over here are sort of the '60s and '70s ranch style. But I would ask that you favorably consider our request and that you recommend to the mayor and council to change the zone. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you very much, Mr. Reese. Couple of questions, does anybody have any questions they'd like to ask all the gentlemen up here? Will this be strictly rental, or is it rental ownership as well?
My plan is to be strictly rental. That's sort of where my passion is, and I think there's an important, maybe it's a small market for this kind of product. We have, like in our houses, we have some people who are retirees, who have relocated here to be close to their children so their children can take care of them. You have people who are transitioning into the community who are not ready to build a home. They'd like to build a home, and so they're looking for a place to rent on a shorter term.
So, it's basically six rental units?
It is.
In the one building?
In the one building.
And it's three-story?
It's three stories.
Okay. And is there elevator, I mean?
Because the building is so small, it would not need a large elevator, so we're looking at putting in a small elevator to give that accessibility to people. I'm 62-years-old, I need a new hip. I don't handle stairs very well.
And if I may, Mr. Chairman, and commission members, and for the public, just to clarify again, part of going through the zoning analysis with the applicant, the request is going from an R1 to an R3 multifamily. In light of the fact that our zoning ordinance requires certain, has certain requirements such as compliance with definitions, so for instance, a multifamily dwelling unit is defined in essence as a detached type of product or of one single building with multiple units inside. So, although the applicant's staff originally worked together on maybe some sort of detached unit, and Mr. Snaby and I have discussed from a legal perspective, because the zoning definitions require that a detached product, what you typically would think of as that single-family home, would only be applicable to a, you know, R3 single-family dwelling. It couldn't go into the multifamily dwelling. So, it's a little bit of a...
Evolution.
Yeah, it's one of those where although there may be the desire for a detached product, based upon the zoning requests with the units, we're very limited based upon our definition section. So, just because the applicant had touched on that, I just wanted to clarify kind of how we arrived at that, I guess, point we're at now.
Mr. Reese, how big are the units going to be each unit, or are you contemplating?
I believe your ordinance has a minimum of 800 square feet. These are going to be 1,250 apiece with our concept right now.
And are the units going to be accessed by an internal highway?
Yes, sir. It will be.
And each unit will have its own entrance, I guess?
It will, and let's go back to the picture of the building. Each unit will have access, there will be an entry point in the front of the building and one on the rear. What I'm working with the architects with now is subject, if we get the approval, is maybe making this three porches here all the way down, and then the residents will be able to come out on the porch and overlook the park. But we're kind of funny. We're not going to let them put their own furniture out there. We will provide the furniture on the front of this as a common area so that we can maintain the appearance.
Where are you going to put the elevator?
There is actually room in the internal hallway for the elevator.
And are the units one level, or are they two stories?
They'll all be flats, and let's go back to the, yeah, to the floor plan. And so, the units are basically the same, and this would be a large living-dining combination. This is a kitchen right here. This is a smaller second bedroom and a nice bathroom. And then this is a much larger master bedroom with a much larger master bath. And for example, this particular plan calls for garden tubs. I probably will not put in garden tubs, but I'll save that space in case a resident needs a walk-in tub at some point. And then we will put low fresh-hold showers in all of these units because more and more of us are going to need that.
Does anybody else have any other questions? If you don't mind, I've got a couple. One, I know that over the years, the city has had a difficult time with the drainage behind the new Veterans Memorial. How will you all be handling that stormwater runoff?
We will have to dig into that when we get into the engineering stage. I've been told that there have been some improvements made over there and that that may have been addressed, but, you know, we'll comply with what needs to be complied with to meet the runoff requirements. And what we're also looking at here is the existing structure that was there was about 1,700 square feet. So, the footprint on this building will only be about 2,500 square feet, so we're not substantially increasing the footprint. We'll keep the paving to the minimal in order to meet the requirements...
The parking's going to be paved?
The parking will be paved, or it'll have some sort of a pervious surface that will help with the water runoff.
And, Mr. Chairman, what the applicant's referring to is throughout the process, staff had identified through going out and site visits, there had been some improvements made, I believe in 2018 or thereabouts, where a new kind of a pipe was put in and kind of threw the park out to the creek. There is more improvements needed, and I told the applicant, in accordance with however their grading plan lines up, that one of the conditions that would be placed before the mayor and council, should this be, as this moves forward, staff would recommend to the council with any sort of approval, if any sort of approvals, that the applicant works with staff, the corner of their property, there is an inlet that does need work. It needs to be lowered, I believe, a little lower to catch, and whether the ditch needs to be dug out. By not adding that much more pervious surface, as originally identified through the individual units with individual paths and parking, I do think we're going to be okay with any runoff. But one of our recommendations might would be to a combination pervious and pervious parking surfaces or whatever the applicant's capable with on that.
I just had a couple, two questions, real quick, but they're more towards staff than for you, so if anybody else has any questions or whatever, feel free to take a seat. I'll be asking them if you don't mind. The only other couple of things I had, does this mean the comprehensive plan overlay for that district?
It does, Mr. Chairman. And in terms of item G, there's an analysis of housing, transportation, natural and cultural resources, community facilities and services. And from a land use perspective, it is in the West Jasper Gateway Corridor, which does encourage a mixed-use element from historic Jasper to the 515 corridor, multifamily residential where appropriate. By this being added park and backing up to some single-family residences, that does provide for kind of a transitional use. And the connectivity of pedestrian connectivity between neighborhoods, schools downtown, and the park, this would be kind of a candidate for a good land use. And a variety of densities has also been identified.
I just didn't want to step on the comprehensive plan. And the last question I had is addressing fire. Does the city currently have apparatus to be able to handle a fire in a structure such as this?
Through the plan review process, there is a height restriction, a restriction of 40 feet from the top of the building. Our fire marshal in concert with our plan reviewer would have to determine in terms of any fireproofing or sprinklers at that level. But that would be one of the conditions as well, that they'd meet the building standards with Clark Patterson Lee and our fire marshal.
Okay. Does anybody else have any questions at the moment? Do we have anybody that would like to speak addressing this issue? Yes, sir. If you would, please state your name.
My name is Neil McKenzie. I'm a retired professor. I live at 60 Silvers Avenue, which is just behind the property under discussion here, about, oh, I guess, less than 200 feet away. I've lived, I've owned the property since 1983. My wife was born in the old Coker Hospital in Canton, and she was raised here, went to high school here, and lived here until we got married in 1967. We purchased the house in 1993 and had it renovated, enlarged a little bit. We purchased the house in 1983, had it renovated in 2003. We are very concerned that development of multifamily housing this close and in this area might be detrimental to our property values, and it might cause other problems too. One of my neighbors is with me, and he shares some of my concerns. Oh, and I ask the committee's pardon, as you can tell, a little older now than I was, and I sometimes have to search for words, and it may take me a little while to say what I would like to say. One of the concerns that we have, and have had ever since the Chamber of Commerce building was built, and we started having the Marvel Festival and other activities there, is that during a few days of the year, traffic gets to be quite a problem. And adding 12 more cars, vehicles, permanently domiciled there would add to the traffic congestion and could easily create additional problems. It's been much better in recent years, but I remember back in the early years, we frequently had trouble getting in and out of Silvers Avenue because of the traffic. Would hate to see that get any worse, it'd be bothersome to us. Another concern that I would like to bring to the attention of the planning office is that the houses in that area, I think it's called the GD Allen Subdivision or something like that, and there are currently four, five, six, seven, eight, eight or nine houses in there. They're all single-family houses, and the one that the property were talking about was a single-family house until the fire. And we, we're just normally resistant to change in our neighborhood. But the houses were built, I think, in the 1970s, and the sewage and water that was installed at that time, as I understand it, has only been upgraded when there was some problem that had to be remedied. I've had to replace the sewage line leading from the street to my house. I noticed just last week that one of the other houses there on Hickory Street had to do the same thing. The house adjacent to the property under consideration is, I believe, a parsonage for one of the local churches. I don't know if there's anybody here representing... I don't know if there's anybody here representing the church or what their concern or ideas about it is, but that's something I would mention. I guess our biggest concern, two biggest concerns are additional congestion. I'm glad to hear that the plan would call for own-property parking. I would hate to see parking for six units be on the street there because the streets are rather narrow. And I really appreciate that they will recently repay. That's something that's been needed for quite some time. Jasper's a wonderful place to live. And my wife and I will spend our retirement years here most likely. And we would, I'm repeating myself, I know, but we would not like to have any major changes to disrupt this period of our life. When we're gone, we won't be concerned about that either. But hopefully, for maybe 10 or 15 or 20 years, we will continue to be concerned about that. I just don't think it's a very good idea to develop multifamily residents, particularly at that density, in an area that has traditionally been single-family owned. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. McKenzie. Is there anyone else that would like to voice or? Yes, sir, please state your name.
Luke Wigginton, 22 Silvers Avenue. I did own the whole front property that I sold to my agents. And one concern I've got, our former mayor told me about 20 years ago, that said, Luke, said, "If any of your property burns, you must replace it with brick construction like the rest of ours." And so, I didn't know whether, one of my concerns was, is this gonna be a brick apartment powered by gas or whatever, because that's what the mayor told me, said it has to be brick. So, I didn't know what your deal was, only the building.
Can I answer his question?
Sure. I don't want to get into an argument in between the two factions, but if you can answer the question, please do so.
From staff's perspective, Mr. Chairman, just for the public and for the applicant, I'm not aware of any sort of architectural design standards or any restrictions or covenants or otherwise placed on any neighborhood or any particular property. If there is something that, you know, requires that, it has not been conveyed to at least me during my tenure. In terms of practice, policy ordinances, there's all sorts of different things that the way people govern, but I can only do what is required in this ordinance, and I'm not aware of anything. I do think that this commission and the mayor and council can obviously take anything into consideration and work with the applicant. And, Mr. Chair, I'll let the applicant, I guess, make comment as well, if he wants to.
Please.
Well, I didn't ask him where he got that information. He just told me, he said, Luke, you must remember that if you have to replace one, it has to be a brick home. It cannot be wood frame or anything like that.
Well, we appreciate that. We'll take that into consideration.
I mean, like I said, it might not mean anything, but that's what he told me, he said. And two, as the leader was saying, it's narrow streets, and the more traffic comes towards it, it's about making two, you know, so that's one problem there.
Mr. Chairman, may I speak to that traffic?
I've already given you your five minutes, as well as the gentleman presenting the arguments on, yes, sir, are you, do you have any else? Mr. Wigginton, do you have anything else you'd like to, okay? Yes, ma'am.
My name's Leslie Cunilus, and I live in Summit Street. And we do have traffic issues. It's not like quite enough for two cars to pass, really. You don't have to pull over. There is congestion in that corner. I can't imagine how a three-story building would fit there. But, yeah, there are traffic issues. And he's right, that drainage down there at that corner, it's always clogging up stuff, it's over the grade, even the new one you guys have done. But we do appreciate the narrow, the paved roads. But, this is just a really odd thing. We were quite shocked when we just got this letter in the mail, frankly. I think the thought that somebody would want, we were hoping it was just a duplex, and it would be nice and modest and small and one-layered, level, and just fit there nicely. Just not a...
Thank you, ma'am. Yes, sir.
Bill?
I lived there since 1970, and I bought property around me. And the property I bought, they were gonna put U-plex there. So, I was lucky enough to be able to attain the property in lots all these years. And the whole purpose is, I don't want to be left alone in my own house. I don't want people living down below me that's gonna be driving in and out. If you ever pulled out of that road and then run over by a car, like I did one...
Oh, God, you can't get in and out.
And it done a lot of damage to me at the time, made me real sore. My leg was hurt. The ambulance was right behind me, and they were able to carry me to the hospital and get me checked out. I was real lucky not to have any problems, 'cause it knocked me 50 foot around, turned going the other way.
It's already pretty dangerous, yes.
And I go down that road on Hickory Street because I don't want to pull out the intersection there where suddenly comes into Church Street. I mean, you just take a chance when you pull out there, 'cause they come over top of the hill, and the time you see them, they're already on. And we already got the stores and stuff, or the restaurants and everything already. We're covered up with traffic, and we have a problem getting out. So, I go down Hickory Street and turn on to Maple Street to get out into the road where I got a better viewpoint of the traffic, oncoming traffic. And that's what worries me. Also, 12, 12 more parking places down there. You can't, they have the Fourth of July, they have the Marvel Festival down there, they have...
Many festivals.
Many festivals. And we have, to put more traffic there, it would just cause that much more congestion.
Chaos.
Chaos. And I just, the way I feel about it, I know you got some stuff that looks real pretty, but would you want a big apartment next to your house?
Excuse your honor, if you would, please address us, and then we will ask the gentleman to reply.
Okay, I'm sorry. But, your concern, I've been living there, I think, since 1970.
Appreciate your input. Is there anyone else that would like to voice? Yes, sir.
My name's Terry Burris. I live at 44 Hickory Street, the property that you owns today. I have similar concerns about traffic and infrastructure. There've been a lot of water and sewer repairs in the last three or four years, and I was rather startled last August to find out there's not a fire hydrant anywhere near. I would hope that, you know, if changes are made, that one would be installed, because that was a serious concern that I have. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Is there anyone else that would like to voice concern at this point? Mr. Reese, would you like to reply to any of these concerns?
Yes, I mean, I'm here because I like the people in Dickens County and Jasper, and I like all of these people, and, you know, I want to show them respect and deference when we go through this process and if we are improved and if we're able to build it. Part of what I'm aiming for here is so that seniors will have an additional option for housing in Jasper. My parents are 86 and 89, and we have had to move them out of the community because we didn't have the option here that we needed. And although the zoning ordinance requires us to have 12 parking spaces, if this holds true to what I think will, the market will appeal to in these units, this will probably be seniors. And with seniors, you're not likely to have more than one car per unit if you have that. And that's sort of been my experience around the country as I've worked on senior developments. But I don't want to add stress to anyone's life or where they're living, and I want to work with these people, but, you know, I would ask that you approve this. And asking if I would want to live next to this building, and I would say yes, I would very much like living next to the building that I plan to build. I think, I think people will be pleased when they see the product, when it is completed.
Do you have any more questions on the hope we have?
Is this gonna be restricted to seniors only, or is this a, just a big possibility? I'm missing something there.
Yeah, you can have developments that are restricted to 55 and above and 62 and above, but if we go through those hoops, it's really hard to do that when you're talking about just doing six units. I think the natural appeal is going to be for, for the seniors. There's all kind of HUD requirements that you get into if you put those restrictions.
Does anyone have any further questions? Do I hear a motion either way on this project?
I'd like to speak to the attorney for a second. I'm with 12 points for the side of Texas. We've written, it's entirely held against. And I'm concerned, do I have a conflict?
You would not have a conflict, because in the, in a community the size of Jasper, it's difficult. If you say that's a conflict, then almost all the conflict out in members of the board, because almost always, somebody knows either that the developer or has a nephew or something that lives close by. So, I wouldn't see that as a conflict.
Rodney, I don't seem in a position to table this. I'm, I'm kind of up in the air on this right now, and I would, unless I defer to our attorney, what options are available?
I think you can table it, but it would only be available to table it to a meeting in the following month. You couldn't table it indefinitely.
Understand.
The applicant has a right to, you know, get a yes or no, or a yes with conditions, and needs that in a timely manner. So, you could table it to a meeting in March. We would have to redo advertisement for it. But it is legally permissible for you to do so.
I have a question. When I saw this about the traffic, and what would be the plans for the additional traffic in the area, either from the city or from the owner of the property?
The state route, the city has no jurisdiction in terms of any sort of signalized intersections. By way of the existing streets, there's no plans that have been put forward to do anything beyond what had already been accommodated with the resurfacing.
Could I ask a question, Mr. Lonnie Waters? DOT currently is working on a project to alter the Highway 53 corridor from Wendy's all the way out to basically the county office where the Burn Mountain Road, I believe. Would this affect this project in any way?
Okay, I had a phone conversation with the DOT in Carson just last week. They have the project that was supposed to be let September the 7th, 17th of this year, has now been postponed to May of 2021. So, there's nothing gonna be done until then if it's, if it's not postponed again. So, that project is put on hold right now and won't even be let till May of 2021. Would it affect this? It's gonna affect the property on the road, because according to all plans, the road will fork right there, Mr. Lawson's driveway where the rock columns are. That is just before you get to Maple Street. All the traffic leaving town will be westbound traffic only, there will be two lanes. So, all the eastbound traffic going into town will circle down behind Mr. Bozley's house and go through the pasture, come out on A.W. Lawson Boulevard, and go up through Spring Street to Walgreen. And you can make left or right-hand turns off of that. So, the only traffic that you would be dealing with if this project, it comes to pass, is the westbound traffic. And so, when you pull out, you will have to turn right and go toward the four lane, and then find a turning point, which I think one's gonna be at Gordon Road down at the bank. And then if you want to go into town, you'll have to make a U-turn and go back. So, that, all that has been put on hold at this time.
Thank you, Mr. Waters.
And, Mr. Chair, if I may, just, just because this is a new composition of board members and for the public, I do want to make sure that everyone is aware that the Planning and Zoning Commission members are appointees of the elected body. They do not make any sort of final decisions by way of it becoming anything more than this is a recommending body. So, I just wanted to make sure that this board, along with the public, know that any decisions made this evening, there is a scheduled regular council meeting of the mayor and council on Monday, March the 2nd, whereupon this item is advertised to be considered for some sort of council action. So, just to make sure that the commission knows anything on their agenda, any action taken, recommendations, or then staff provides the elected body kind of any public comments and/or any action taken by the commission in consideration of all these items.
Thanks, sir. Again, is there any proposal, I mean, any offerings on what you would like to do on this matter?
I'm not a favorer of personal.
Care to make that into a motion?
Yeah, I made a motion that we could turn it down.
We have a motion, is there a second?
I'll second it.
All in favor of the motion to turn the request down? Any opposed? The motion has been passed to turn the project down. Our second item on the list is a public hearing, and if you would excuse me for just one moment, I need to discuss something with the attorney real quick. Ladies and gentlemen, on this public hearing, the request to rezon partial number 031003. Point 002, at 18... Point 002 at 1874 Hobson Road from C2 to R1. I would like to place it on the record that acting as the director of planning and development for Pickens County, I was involved with the gentleman when they came to discuss this project with me. However, the jurisdiction of this property is in the city of Jasper and as such, I advise them such. So if you're talking with the attorney, I am not required to accuse myself, but I would like to let it be known that I have been in discussion with these people prior to it being brought up before the city of Jasper. Mr. Douglas.
Mr. Chairman and council, I mean, commission members and public. Lonnie and I have kind of tag teamed this one. I did want to just kind of tee it up a little bit. The same staff analysis, staff report is in your packets. Whereupon what we do is we reference the different items as required through zoning ordinance, also referencing the comprehensive plan as it pertains to housing, transportation, land use, et cetera. This is a, a tract of land that had been subdivided from a much larger tract along 515. The applicant has recorded the 68-plus acres as it was subdivided. So the only access to the parcel is off of Hobson. So there is no access off of 515. So you'll see at the very front of your report, a highlighted area of the much larger tract. And so if you then reference the plan towards the end of that particular section, you'll see the portion that was cut off. I'll let Lonnie kind of talk a little bit about the, the history and, and then the applicants here and then I can answer any questions.
Okay, Mr. Chairman and Board, several years ago, the city annexed and everything from Philanthropy Road up to Antioch Road at Talking Rock, both sides of the road, east and west. This stretch is Wildcat Timber. A company owns this property on 515. They own a total of over 700 acres. The west side, which would be the left side of the road going north, is the tract of land that they are dividing. I will also be moving, taking a new plat to the county offices tomorrow. The timber company, everything on the west side, they are dividing it into three tracts. This tract has already been the 68 acres. It's already been completely surveyed and it's, it's an entity of its own. They are going to make two tracts, 165 acre and 180 something acre tract adjoining this on the backside. They are talking about maybe rezoning. It is C2, the entire property has been for years. But they've advertised at that and no takers and developers have looked at it as far as purchasing it. So that's the reason they're dividing it into smaller tracts. This tract of 68 acres does come, the entrance will be off of Hobson. They are wanting to put a road up the middle of it. They are wanting to divide the 68 acres into approximately 10 to 12 acre tracts and have somewhere between 10 and 12 or 14 houses or lots to be sold off of that. So they will be making, taking the 68 acres and dividing it into tracts of land, approximately 12 estimated. And then the, whoever the purchaser is of that property will be responsible for coming in and building their house or however how they want to do that property after they buy it.
Thank you, sir. Do you have anything else to?
And just to be, just to be mindful, this is a situation whereupon the, the smaller tract of 68 acres has been subdivided. In its current zoning classification, it is currently C2. And staff does recognize that from a land use compatibility of surrounding properties that are all in the unincorporated portion of the county, it's larger tracts of land. It's very rural, it's very residential. So from a land use perspective, it does not, at least in staff's mind, make good land use for that tract to remain commercial. However, due to this being in the city limits, but a pretty good ways away from some of our public safety personnel stations, we did have our police and fire run the different routes and by and large, it is a 10-minute response time. I believe the applicant is aware that this is city limits and there would be a delay in public safety. However, that is just one of the things that occurs. So the applicant is receptive that although it's being requested to an R1 zoning designation, that we would conditionally approve or recommend approving this to only allow up to 12 lots. So in effect, it would mirror the larger tracts in the county rather than a traditional R1 minimum lot size of about half acre. And I believe that the applicant, I don't think the applicant's here tonight, but that is something that we did discuss with them, that it makes sense land use to be residential, but to make sure that the density is such that it's comparable to surrounding.
Thank you, sir. There, the applicant is not here this evening. Is there anyone that would like to express any opinions addressing this issue? I see none. Do I hear recommendation?
If, is it, if it's, if it is recommended and approved, is there a set, it is going to be a set five acre minimum?
And, and Mr. Siphon can comment as well. I think that we would be recommending to you all and to the mayor and council that the condition is only to include that it would be an R1 zoning with a minimum lot size of five acres or not to exceed 12 units for the 68 acres.
You could make that a condition of the reason.
Who's going to develop the roads to each one of these lots? Is that going to be up to the individual property owner? And there are no public utilities provided out there as a press.
Okay, water is 2,360 feet away from the entrance of this property. It is city water. It's a six-inch water main. And they are discussing whether they want to extend at their expense, to extend it the distance or leave it up to the individuals to purchase or drill a well or, you know, purchase from the city to get it out there. That will be up to the landowners after it's divided. And they will, it will be a privately owned street going through the middle of the property. Unless, I mean, if they decided they wanted it to be a city street, they would have to bring the street up to our code and it would have to be inspected and approved by the city. And they would, they would have to guarantee it for one year, the maintenance of it to make sure it upheld and everything.
What waste water will be through septic system?
Septic system only. There is no sewer in that area at all.
Gotcha.
And as far as the tracts of five acres or so, they did come in and they were one, possibly two lots that had some very steep ground. They might have to make them six acres or four acres, but they're shooting for a five acre lot. It's what they're wanting to do. But because of the terrain, they might need to vary just one, one way or the other.
Ladies and, I'm sorry. What's the composition of the interior road going to be?
Of, of the private road?
I believe it said that they were going to cut one road up the middle of it.
Yes.
What's, what's that composed of?
As of right now, it's just going to be a gravel road till they start selling the lots and it'll be up to the landowners whether they want to concrete it or, I mean, it'll be a private street. They have to maintain it.
So they'll have to covenant some restrictions, I mean, in order to hand that over, that private road to the different private?
I'm sure they will, yeah.
Does anyone have any other questions? Do you have a motion for this issue?
I would make a recommendation with the five acre minimum. Didn't you say that that was?
We have a motion for, to approve it with a five acre minimum attached to it. Do I hear a second?
I'll second that.
We have a second, all those in favor? Any opposed? Thank you very much, it's been approved. The third item this evening is a public hearing to request rezon and annex, request rezon and annex partial number JA 2038 at 1343 Talking Rock Road from rural residential, since I was with the county and tell you what the R R is, to C2. Mr. Douglas?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and commission members. Once again, Lonnie and I are going to kind of give you a little insight into this. You'll notice in the staff report, the same analysis is conducted. This is an instance where the, across the road, the land use from the church at the Pioneer Industrial Boulevard to Talking Rock, this parcel essentially is where Pioneer dead ends into Talking Rock. So the half acre lot size is currently residential use. The applicant is requesting to rezon and annex into the city to allow for a commercial use consistent with surrounding city property. Currently, I believe there's a commercial type use just to the south of the parcel. And beyond that, I'll let Lonnie kind of explain a little bit about, once again, the history and where we're at and if the applicant's here and then I can kind of sum up any additional info.
Okay, for the ones of you that are familiar with the area, it used to be an abandoned home that sat on the north side of what is the gas company on old Talking Rock Road. And that abandoned home has been torn down and removed. The gentleman has cleaned up the lots. There is a residential septic system there, septic tank. The health department, when talking to the county about if they had any objections, the health department that permits septic tanks said that for a small business like he's talking about, that he could use this septic system, that it would be approved through them. And the reason this gentleman is wanting to annex it into the city is it is a small lot and the city setbacks from the landline are a little smaller than the county's, according to what we can find out. And he needs every foot that he can to build his building that he's looking at building in the future.
Is the applicant here this evening?
Yes, sir.
Do you have anything you wish to add?
No, as Lonnie mentioned, the big thing is that when I purchased the property, it was owned by the county, still is. I was told it wouldn't be hard to get it zoned commercial. However, at the time, we didn't know, since it's touching agriculture on one side, it would require a 35-foot buffer and the property is narrow. It's only a little bit over 100 feet wide. So a 35-foot buffer would, it would make it really hard to build anything. And right now, there's nothing etched in stone. I would just like to get it annexed into the city so that the setbacks would be smaller and eventually maybe just put a small truck accessory shop on it.
I'm going to crawl out on a limb and assume that people sitting in the first two rows are not going to listen to any comments one way or the other. Does anybody have any questions concerning this proposal?
What are the setback limits on the city versus the 35 feet in the gap?
The city is 25 in the front, 15 in the back and 10 on each side.
10 on each side?
Yes.
Was the size of the issue, right?
Yes.
Okay.
If there's no questions, do we have any recommendations?
Can I make a motion to approve?
I'll second that motion. We have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you very much, it's been approved.
Thank you very much. Good luck.
Last item is the city of Jasper zoning ordinance amendment, zoning map consideration for approval. Mr. Douglas?
And if Mr. Siphon is comfortable, I'm going to kind of let him speak a little bit procedurally. However, from a staff perspective, this is a public hearing whereupon we're seeking any sort of public input on our zoning maps, which are on display. You have the entire city along with a closer insert on some key parcels. But ultimately, what we like to do is go through the process of approving or recommending approving our zoning districts through this map. There are some procedural elements about our zoning ordinance and how we do things. But essentially, all of these items that go before the mayor and council in effect are amending the ordinance, therefore, zoning ordinance, therefore, they in themselves are ordinances such as the zoning map. And so I think in your packet, I included a kind of little excerpt of what the ordinance would entail that the council would have to be considering. That is not necessarily something that you all have to concern yourselves with per se. But this is procedural of public hearing for any public input about the zoning districts. Mr. Schach, if you want to add some things?
And I would just add that under the zoning procedures law, a rezoning, like we've just gone through for two or three applicants, requires a public hearing. And under that zoning procedures law, if you change the language of the zoning ordinance, which we call a text amendment, it also has to go through a public hearing. And that may seem strange to you, but your zoning ordinance is what creates the zoning districts. And the zoning districts have the inherent allowed uses within that district. So you think about it, if you have a residential zoning district that allows site-built homes and manufactured homes within the zoning ordinance, you did a text amendment to take out manufactured homes, then you're changing what can be allowed within the zoning district. You're changing the allowed uses. So for that reason, anytime you amend your zoning ordinance, the zoning procedures law requires you to have a public hearing on it because another way to change zoning is literally what does your ordinance say? And so what happened is, of course, over time, you have every year several rezonings. And if you adopted your zoning ordinance, say in 1998, and here we are in 2020, you know, you may have 200 rezonings during that time. know, you may have 200 rezonings during that time period where your original map doesn't really look like what you're currently allowing. So when we looked at the ordinance, there wasn't a good procedure within the ordinance of how do you adopt an updated map. So the text amendment is providing for that procedure to adopt an updated map, where we can have a current map. You know, every year, we'll do a new map so that it's accurate and shows what the current zoning is for all the parcels. So we did the text amendment, or we're suggesting and recommending to you that we do this text amendment that sets out a procedure by which the city can update the maps, and then we wanted you to approve the updated maps because the map is a part of the zoning ordinance. It's literally incorporated into the zoning ordinance. So it is a part of the ordinance. So that's what we're doing tonight, is staff and I have a recommendation that you recommend approval of the text amendment that basically sets out a formal procedure for adopting an updated map, and also you approve recommending that the council adopt an updated map that reflects all the rezonings that have gone on over time, where we'll have an accurate current map. And then in the future, you know, every year, we can update the map and keep it current. So that's, that's what's going on, and I'd be glad to answer any questions that you may have.
Since we have, this is a hearing to review this item, is there anyone that wishes to voice any concerns here over this item this evening?
I see none.
I see none, so does the board have any questions that they would like to address?
Well, it seems very confusing to me. I'm not really sure what we're doing here.
It's a, if I can be so bold, it's a, it's a policy, it is a procedure that you go through, and you need to keep a current map of your zoning classifications and your zoning parcels, because it is basically the backbone of the zoning ordinance. So what they're trying to do, the city is, or what we're trying to do, is to create the wording in which we can adopt this map on a yearly basis, instead of waiting for an extended period of time and have to do a large number of the time. We're setting up a process for where you can do this once a year. I won't go so far as to say it's a formality, but it is something that would be much, much easier next year, come this time, than currently what we're doing this evening. This evening is, we're trying to put in the ordinance, which allows you to adopt this map on a yearly basis.
Okay. Sure. I agree.
And is this the new map that was?
This is the proposed map, the correct.
And is it based off of an old map, but updated?
What, what staff did was work with regional commission in terms of going through our files to make sure that all the documentation we had, the zoning parcels are accurately reflected in terms of the different zoning districts. So it, the last map we had, we referenced that, took it to the regional commission, and what they did was basically recolored it, and we just, any zonings, rezonings that happened between the last map and this one is reflected as such.
Any other questions? Did anybody care to make a question?
I guess you guys have checked it and made sure that it's correct. I know one time there was a missing map, like, there used to be one, and then no one had it, so that was the reason for my question.
Okay, what Shawna and I did was exactly what Brandon has said, but we worked with the county, we worked with Northwest Regional, we worked with Argus GIS programs, we have covered every option, we pulled files. Shawna worked several hours pulling files on past zonings. We have brought this up to date, and, you know, there might be something that's not right. I mean, it's possible, because we, we went back, what was the year, 2000?
Two thousand and two.
2002 is where we started, and we've moved forward over the past few months. So even if we do find something, I mean, it can, by doing this each year, we can, we can, we can repair it, we can fix it, whatever needs to be. So, you know, we want to keep one of these maps on record in our office at planning zoning, and then if we find something that's wrong, or we annex or rezone something, then we can document it on this paper copy, and then next December, we'll send it Northwest Regional, they'll print us a brand-new map with all the corrections, additions, or deletions.
And just as a side note, the county is currently doing the exact same thing as we speak. We already have the ordinance in place, but we are adopting the new map. Usually, you do it within the first two or three months of the year to address all the previous zoning changes.
To make a motion, we approve.
All in favor? Any opposed? Okay, it has been taken care of. Yes, sir.
Mr. Chairman, on all the actions that's been presented here tonight, I'd like to request that all files, notes, and videos of the process be included in all the records for tonight's meeting.
Thank you very much, please do so. Does anybody have any comments or concerns that they would like to address as an open hearing? None? Would like to entertain a motion to adjourn? I'll still move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
We're gone.